Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
We are going to do the Hillsborough County Plan Amendment Public Hearing first because the applicant is be taken so that we can then vote to see about moving this to the December meeting. This is the Hillsborough County Plan Amendments.
Good evening, Dix. Here. Marina?
Here.
Roar?
Here.
Wilds?
Here.
Dickerson? Rodriguez?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Wilman?
Here.
Thank you, you have a call.
Okay, thank you. As I stated, the Hillsborough County Conference of Plan Amendment 18-14, the applicant has requested that this be moved to the December public hearing. Would somebody like to make a motion to move this?
No motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Joseph, a second by Commissioner Marina. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor of moving this to the December public hearing? Say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to close the Hillsborough County public hearing, and we're going to move right into the city of Tampa public hearing. Okay. Welcome to the November 19th, 2018 Plan Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on Tampa Conference of Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. If you will, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on a specific amendment, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment signing sheet at the back of the room. When addressing the commission, please begin with your name, address, and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second and discussion, a vote will be taken. Roll call, please.
Dix? Here. Marina?
Here.
Roar?
Here.
Wilds?
Here.
Dickerson? Rodriguez?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Wilman?
Here.
Thank you, you have a call.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start with item number two, Tampa Conference of Plan Amendment 18-12.
Good evening. Jay Collins with the Planning Commission. I will be here tonight actually working the presentation for David Haye, who is actually on vacation. So, 18-12 is actually in the central Tampa Planning District. This is within the West Tampa Urban Village, basically where you're in West Tampa. This is an aerial of the site. The site is outlined in red. You can see there. If you look at the athletic fields going east of the site, that is the University of Tampa. Going up into the northeast of that picture is actually Tampa Prep. And if we continue on this, actually off the aerial now, you would actually get into Julian B. Lane Park, and then you would also get to Blake High School. I go through all of that just to tell you about the institutional uses that are lined up along Bush Boulevard. You'll also notice as you traverse back down, excuse me, North Boulevard, as you travel back down North Boulevard, you run at Cass Street into the CSX right-of-way that is there. That CSX right-of-way actually runs on the backside of the site. As we continue further now to our west, you eventually find Willow. If you look at where we are in that area, you'll see a lot of big plate development that's going on in this area. There's some smaller lots. This is actually a historic industrial area from the turn of the century. That rail line that's right there came in at about 1915, and out of that development pattern with that transportation infrastructure, you ended up getting a lot of industrial small warehouses that came into this area. If we keep going a little bit further to the west, you'll see on the other side of Willow, you'll see some small lot development, some of the shotgun homes as they are that were actually built to support the industrial workers that are there. And again, if we continue outside of this photo, you'll end up what I believe is still called West End, running north and south along Rome and Cass and Cypress, which is a lot of multifamily development that has been built there within the last decade. So I wanted to bookend it to tell you about what's happening on Boulevard and then go all the way over to Rome, just to tell you about what's happening on either side of this and how there's development occurring now in the middle, kind of bookending it. So this is privately initiated, small scale, 1.76 acres, general mixed-use 24 to urban mixed-use 60. This is one of the few areas in the city that actually has general mixed-use 24. It does go back again to that historic nature of some of the industrial uses, commercial uses, and residential uses that were juxtaposed, built all on top of one another. So let's go down to the ground. We'll walk around a little bit at the site. Here, this is looking south from the intersection of Carmen and Gilchrist. The subject site is there on the left-hand side. You see with the "for sale" sign. If you squint at it, or if your eyes are better than mine and you don't have to squint at it, you'll actually see that the land use categories are put down there, which I thought that was quite interesting. We normally don't see that on "for sale" signs for real estate. Looking east down West Carmen Street from where it intersects with North Gilchrist Avenue and the subject site's on the right, all the way in the back there, you can actually see the towers of downtown poking up behind that. But what we're looking at there, all the way in the back of the photo there, is actually the parking garage for the University of Tampa, and the railroad right-of-way is also on the other side of that wooded area. Again, looking west down Fig Street, the subject's on the right-hand side, basically that Palmetto, the fence is in there, and then the Palmetto is grown all around the fence. Looking northeast, CSX right-of-way, again, that's the large parking structure that is there. And again, the site is on the left, how, again, we talked about how it's right up against the CSX right-of-way. And then I believe finally, looking west from the intersection of West Carmen Street, north down Gilchrist Avenue. Again, what has these shown you? These have shown that this has got a lot of warehousing, some light manufacturing in here. You saw some box trucks that were in there. This photo, you can actually see some tanks in the very back there around that orange going around the fencing that's there. We've got one more. This is looking north up, North Delaware Avenue, West Carmen, and again, we're, the subject site's behind us, just again showing you some of the industrial that's around in the area. So here are the land uses. Now, I just went through all of that industrial. Well, all that industrial is there is because block to block, except for what is to the northeast, is all general mixed-use 24. General mixed-use 24 allows for light industrial uses, but it also allows for commercial uses. It allows for residential uses. That's that historic nature of what this area was. If you look further to the west, you'll see there's a mix in there. You'll see some of that general mixed-use 24, then you see some brown on some of the smaller lots, being the residential 20, and then you'll see some pinks being the community mixed-use 35. Again, we're heading towards the west, so we're going towards Rome Avenue. So what is all of that? All of that is the issue of having these plan amendments that have occurred here through time, going to the west, all of those community mixed-use 35s. If we go on the other side of the street and we go back to Boulevard, if you see right at the northeast corner of Cass, the railroad and the Boulevard, and then further up Boulevard, those are urban mixed-use 60s. Again, those are recent plan amendments in this area. So there's been a lot of activity in this area, plan amendment-wise, and if you drive around it, walk around it, ride a bicycle around it, you can see a lot of the new development that is occurring there. This would just show you what would happen with the urban mixed-use 60. I do apologize, the colors are very, very similar. So the maximum potential intensities and densities existing, 42 units of non-residential, 114, almost 115,000. The potential on the other way, 105 units, or almost 250,000 square feet, it would take out consideration for IG, and it would add the consideration of that floor-area ratio being utilized for mixed-use development or for straight residential development. What is of the, whatever might be of benefit to the development, this is something that we will see throughout the mixed-use categories all over the city of Tampa. Agency review. Hillsborough County Schools, Gori Elementary and Wilson Middle do not have adequate capacity. This is unfortunately not uncommon. This occurs quite often in some of the city of Tampa for some of their plan amendments, but these are things that concurrently that occur at the rezoning phase. Consistency review. So David set up this report with the idea of four main areas of consistency, and each of them are a bulletin here, and we'll go over them just briefly. The first is promote appropriate infill, and this is a great area to talk about that infill. When we looked at those photos, one of the things that you didn't see in those photos is you didn't see a lot of sidewalks. You didn't see a lot of curb and gutter. You saw some roads that were small. This is an area that needs appropriate infill and actually rebuild some of that infrastructure that's in that area. You see that infrastructure occurring on Boulevard, and you see that infrastructure occurring on Rome. There are areas in between that now need that same attention. Supporting this in the central Tampa, we talked about this is the central Tampa Planning District, Central Tampa, along with West Shore and the university are the three planning districts in the city of Tampa that are targeted for employment and residential development of this scale. This is also in West Tampa's Urban Village. There are specific policy direction for the West Tampa Village for a mixed-use development pattern to exist within West Tampa. And finally, to promote a form of development supportive of transit and walking. Again, we just talked a little bit about the type of infrastructure that is needed and the infrastructure that exists outside of this immediate area, and you'll also find that you do have transit that occurs on Kennedy, transit that occurs on Boulevard, transit that occurs on Cass, in all directions from the amendment site. With that, the recommendations, planning commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan. I thank you, and this concludes my presentation.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Jay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is John Grandoff. I practice law at the Hillward and Henderson Firm, and my address is Suite 3700 Bank of America Plaza. I have the distinct pleasure of representing my friends Andrew and Alex Cohen with ABC Capital this evening. Andrew and Alex, please raise your hand, and also their joint venture developer on the project, Mr. Jason Macklin of Wingspan Development. More importantly, I'm also joined by Marilyn Nicholson and her husband John, who are the family that owns this property, the Anello family, had Anello tile here for many years. Her father, Vito Anello, established the family business on this property when this was a thriving industrial area, and they have now sought to sell the property and have a development prepared, as Mr. Cohen and Alex Cohen are very capable of doing. They're also joined by Mr. Derek Sackinger, who is a real estate consultant on the project. Jay's done an excellent summary of the geographic location of the property, and I'll simply direct your attention to North Boulevard as it proceeds from Julian Lane Park, and you'll see a trend of UMU 60 development being encouraged in that area by previous plan amendments that you have considered and approved, particularly to the northeast of the property is the UMU 60 planned category. To the west of the property, Willow and beyond, you'll notice the trend of multifamily development, which is certainly fulfilling the direction of the plan that you are charged with enforcing and understanding as part of your deliberations. In your backup, I think it's important to consider Objective 3.5, which asks you to recognize and strengthen center-city neighborhoods. This neighborhood was originally primarily an industrial neighborhood that was encouraged by the railroad line. Many of you probably remember Royal American Shows that brought the Florida State Fair immediately to the other side of the railroad in those days. With the expansion of University of Tampa and the growth of Hyde Park and North Hyde Park, the industrial days of this property are in their twilight, and it's more appropriate to plan for multifamily development that will serve the downtown neighborhood and the expanding portions of North Hyde Park. I think it's important to note that Objective 5.1 was a finding that was also noted in the city of Tampa's planning report, and it says that "the intent of this objective is to support urban village designations that produce a distinctive, high-quality-built environment whose forms and character respect Tampa's unique historic environmental and architectural context and create memorable places that enrich community life." And I think that is where we're going, particularly east of the river in downtown and now west of the river as we move into what was historically West Tampa, the West Tampa neighborhood. Objective 6, excuse me, Objective 9.6 charges you to increase the diversity and prove the sustainability of multifamily residential areas, and you'll see the policies that follow that objective. The report makes a specific finding, going back into the historical portion of the property and the historic nature of it. It says "the continued growth in employment and educational services," think city of Tampa and University of Tampa, "has fueled a renewed interest in housing due to the area's proximity to employment centers and the area's large lot pattern." And you'll look at the aerial photograph from 1938 in the staff report that was prepared by David Haye, and you'll see exactly how far we have come. The report also considers neighborhoods, and it finds in the next page, "the potential for negative impacts, negative impacts to adjacent residential uses from additional density and intensity is minimal. Since the closest residentially zoned property is over 500 feet to the north of the subject site, the planning commission staff has determined that the area is appropriate for additional infill development." And it concludes by stating, "overall, the request for UMU 60 is consistent with overall policy direction of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan and will provide a development pattern that is compatible with long-range development trends of the surrounding area." David concludes with a finding of consistency. The city of Tampa staff, LaShawn Dacus, prepared a companion report that follows the same objectives and reaches the same conclusions, and she finds that based upon the historic development pattern of the area and the location of the subject site, the requested UMU 60 land use category is in the best interest of this area and the city as a whole, and she also finds that the project is consistent. I have had no calls of opposition to this project after noticing the property. I submit to you that these findings by your staff are thorough, thoughtful, and I respectfully request that you adopt them and find that there's a resolution of consistency in order for this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? Okay, no public comment. Any questions from commissioners? No questions? Someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Green.
Move for a finding of consistency Tampa, city of Tampa, Complan Amendment 18-12, and get my wording right. That's it.
Got a motion made. Motion made by Commissioner Green. We've got a second. Second by Commissioner Powell. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to Tampa Conference of Plan Amendment 18-11.
Good evening, Commissioners, Senator Malone, and your planning commission staff. I'm here to present on Tampa Future Land Use Math Amendment 18-11. This is located in the university district and in a neighborhood specifically, it's Old Seminole Heights. It is a privately initiated regular amendment, which means it's over 10 acres, so it is subject to that state and regional review. It's about 16.85 acres. The request before you is to go from light industrial to community commercial 35. In 2016, as part of the November 2016 cycle, we had received a plan amendment request for the exact same site. It was a little different. It was to community mixed-use 35. It's different than what's before you today, but that is a little bit of the background on that, and I'm happy to answer any further questions. We looked at the history of the subject site based on a question from Lorraine, who's filling in for Amber at the briefing. She asked if this had always been industrial, and it turns out it has been, back to the 1979 Preliminary Subsector Plan. This was prepared by the Planning Commission as a continuation of the Horizon 2000 planning process. It was identified as planned industrial. It's hard to see on the map, but this is the approximate location of the subject site, would be in this general area. We don't have planned industrial in our plan anymore, so we noticed it switched to the light industrial in the 1984 adopted future land use map. They got rid of the planned industrial, and this site was designated light industrial. So it has been this way for several decades as this development pattern. Here's the subject site outlined in the red. I have Rallett Park Drive in East Sly, and this is North 30th Street over here. This is a city of Tampa wastewater facility. We have some industrial uses along North 30th. This is a precision electrical repair, and this is Tampa Foods Factory Warehouse. I also have this TECO plant. We have Theochem Laboratories, which is a chemical manufacturing plant to the north of the subject site, as well as a marble and granite supplier to the north of the subject site as well. We also have some single-family residential that it backs up to. You'll see those in my site pictures, multifamily residential to the south. This is the subject site. It's vacant. This is Rallett Park Drive facing south, and this is the subject site on the left-hand side of your screen. This is Theochem Laboratories, the chemical plant located to the north of the subject site. These are the CXX tracks to the west of the subject site. This is a marble and granite business located in the north of the subject site. This is Rallett Park Drive right here. And these are those single-family homes west of North 30th Street. The subject site would have been behind my back as I was taking this picture, so I'm facing North 30th Street. And this is Precision Electrical Repair Services located along North 30th Street, and this interfaces with the City of Tampa Water Treatment Facility. This is the adopted future land use map. The property has an adopted future land use of the light residential, which is that gray color that we see in the area. This is the TECO plant, has a light residential designation, and that City of Tampa wastewater facility has the public, which is the blue use. Rogers Park Golf Course is located in the north. That's the recreational open space. I have Residential 10, which is the orange, Residential 35, which is the dark brown, community mixed-use 30, or community commercial 35, which is the red, a sliver of community mixed-use 35, which is the pink. And this is the proposed request before you today, changing the subject site to community commercial 35, which is that red color. The impacts, currently, the light industrial allows for no residential dwelling unit. So the real impact is that this would allow the potential of about 589 dwelling units. It would also increase the floor-airier ratio, allowing that square footage to be from about a million to about 1.5 million square feet approximately, so it would decrease the amount of industrial lands within the city. It would increase the floor-airier ratio of the subject site, and it would ultimately allow that residential development, which is currently prohibited under the future land use category of that light industrial. We did send this out for agency review. We've received objections from the city of Tampa Planning in Urban Design. LaShawn's report is included in your packet, and we also found this inconsistent with several comprehensive plan policies. Our comprehensive plan really seeks to protect, maintain, and continue intensification of these industrial areas, to provide for the employment opportunities, and it really identifies these industrial areas as key economic engines. It recognizes that these are vital to the city's diversified economic base and its long-term stability. The city of Tampa only has about 300 acres of industrial developable land in the city right now. Over the last 10 years, we have lost approximately 100 acres of this industrial through plan amendments and code changes. So we did find that this was inconsistent with this policy direction and that we need to continue protecting these industrial lands. It's also changing to the community commercial 35 designation, which the comprehensive plan identifies as a mixed-use category. These should be in strategically located areas, and we should also limit residential development in these industrial areas. We found it inconsistent with those policies as well. And that concludes my presentation. The staff recommendation's inconsistent. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, my name is Todd Pressman, 334 Eastlake Road, number 102 in Palm Harbor, Florida. I am absolutely honored and thrilled and excited to be representing the most outstanding group of individuals and persons and organization that I've represented in 25 years. I have here today just a couple of introductions. Pastor Witten, who's a senior pastor at Iowa Church, and Dr. Jerry Haig, who's a CEO and president of Florida Baptist Children's Homes and One Child. So I have a PowerPoint for you, CPA 18-11, and this is a number of organizations working together throughout the community and outside the community. We're located, as your staff has showed you, in mid-Tampa, roughly Seminole Heights. You've seen that the property is located in this fashion. I think it's important to note that there is, as staff told you, residential on this side and to the south, and we think that's important. That's a buffer. The last thing those residents want is a heavy, intensive industrial use right in their backyards. We believe this use, which does have an industrial warehousing component, is a good buffer to those residents. You don't have residents in these other areas where there's industrial category. This is a little closer. You can see it's pretty high-dense, single-family, and then as staff said, you have multifamily to the south. So the issue today, as staff told you, is a future land use amendment to industrial to CC 35. Who is One More Child and Hope Street in concert with Iowa Baptist Church? Since 1904, whether it's providing clean diapers to newborn baby, food for a hungry child, safety for an abused child, or foster-adoptive care homes for children, they work to share with children who have been abused, neglected, abandoned, to provide the protection and healing. They are an outstanding organization that you'll hear more about. Here's just a few glimpses. 1,270 children cared for in loving foster care homes in 2017. 5,000, 579,912 total meals served. 3,645,553 domestic meals, global meals. So there is a primary use here, which is the bringing in and trucking and warehousing of large amounts of foods and distributing those to families. So there is a trucking element. There is a warehousing element. There is an industrial-type activity on this property, and in fact, that is the primary activity of the property. On and on, 5.5 million meals provided in 2017, 94,000 volunteer hours, 1 million meals provided. Their work is just outstanding. I have some more pictures for you, and again, you'll hear more about them. One of the plans for Hope Street Tampa Campus, which I want you to know, has been purchased and already owned by these organizations. Their projected five-year impact, Phase 1, Compassion Center, provides a total of 12 million meals, 68,165 volunteer hours, 24,397 individuals and families impacted. Phase 2, single moms and children housing, serving 100 moms and 250 children. Phase 3, Community Transformation Center to be determined. So this is sort of a multi-function group or multi-function organization providing tremendous services to the community. Here are my premise points. Number one, and this is critical, because you didn't hear this before. City Council voted once already to eliminate the light industrial future land use category for high-density residential. That was unanimous. impact, Phase 1, Compassion Center, provides a total of 12 million meals, 68,165 volunteer hours, 24,397 individuals and families impacted. Phase 2, Single Moms and Children Housing, serving 100 moms and 250 children. Phase 3, Community Transformation Center to be determined. So this is sort of a multifunction group or multifunction organization providing tremendous services to the community. Here are my premise points. Number one, and this is critical, because you didn't hear this before. City Council voted once already to eliminate the light industrial future land use category for high-density residential. That was unanimous vote. Two, as I said, industrial-type uses will still be present. Three, the economic support, employment will still be there. And number four, there are other CC35, FLU categories very close by. So prior Tampa Council, under TA CPA 16-14 at this site, was light industrial CMU 35. It was approved, not just approved, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, but unanimously approved by the entire City Council for the change from light industrial to a very similar category, CMU 35. Furthermore, that went on to DCA, which is now DEC, which also proved it. This is indicating the unanimous vote by Council, and this is a letter from DEO indicating that they reviewed it, and they did not find any adverse impacts. I do want to make you aware and be very clear that the property owners at the time lost the deal. There was not a second vote by City Council, but there was a first vote and approval by DEO. Now, there are some policies that you have not heard, and these are very important policies under your housing element of a comprehensive plan. Policy 1.1.1.2, provide opportunities throughout the city for emergency shelters and transitional housing for people who are homeless. That's exactly what these outstanding people do. Policy 1.1.1, work with existing, community-based, nonprofit organizations to provide affordable housing opportunities. Policy 1.1.7, continue collaboration among housing agencies such as Tampa Housing Authority, Housing Finance Authority, faith-based organizations, and private developers to develop housing opportunities. Policy 1.1.1.0, in coordination with private organizations, develop permanent and transitional housing that is affordable for extremely low and low-income households. Not only do they do that, but they work and consult and work with these folks who are down to bring them toward a much more stable life. There are some comp plan policies in another category that do meet. Policy 1.2.8, promote a range of uses in close proximity to each other. These uses shall include but not limited to mixed-density housing, with a variety of housing options, local serving goods and services, civic uses and employment generators. Policy 2.1.2, use limited land resources more efficiently to pursue a development pattern that is more economically sound by encouraging in-field development on vacant and underutilized sites. Well, you've heard, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, you've heard that this site has been vacant since the beginning of time. Nobody wanted it. Nobody developed it. This is an outstanding use for this property, and they put their money where their mouth is because they own it. Policy 8.9.2, encourage the continued intensification existence of industrial warehousing distribution facilities. That will be a major function of this property. It will be there. These are some photos of their site in Lakeland, which I visited. As you can see quite clearly, there's a lot of warehousing for food and backpacks. Backpacks is a big part of their push. For clothing for folks, you can see some of the backpack operation here. And even outside, you can see a couple of loading sheds and some of their truck operations. And yes, there is a component, a residential component, for emergency care for families that, single mothers who can't afford a place and are not doing well in life, and they're coached and they're worked with. So in summary, this is an organization that is community-supporting, tremendous work in many areas of desperately needed social assistance and getting people back on their feet. And you have in your records two outstanding letters, which I am, again, honored to submit to you. One from Mr. Jeff Ekins, who is the Superintendent of Hillsborough County Schools, in glowing and tremendous support of this organization. And another letter from Judy Royston, who's the Chief Probation Officer, Circuit 13 for the Department of Juvenile Justice. Again, just an outstanding letter of support, asking for your support, recognizing what these people knew of the community and why they are so desperately needed on this property in this community. Continuing in summary, city and county state approval already made a change away from the industrial future land use category of industrial. There are many comp plan categories that do support the applications I've read to you. It still has industrial component. And I do want to note to you, as you saw on the report from your staff, that there is plenty of the same future land use category in the vicinity to the south that you saw all the red. So it's certainly not a red color on the map by itself. So with that, we appreciate your attention and consideration. There are a number of people here to speak with you, and I'm sure that you look forward to hearing from them. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public want to speak on this item?
The first person's always a little shy.
Yeah, please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes per person.
Good evening. My name is Keith Bab. Address 5723 Suite William Terrace, Lando Lakes, Florida, 34639. I want to speak in light of objective 8.9 and also policy 8.9.5. One of the things that was not mentioned in terms of the residential population in the vicinity of the proposed site is if you look to the north, you'll see the Sulphur Springs community, and to the south, you'll see East Tampa. One of the reasons that this commission here wants to reserve industrial sites, as noted earlier, we talked about serving as industrial sites, serving as economic engines, as well as new jobs and employment opportunities. So in light of that, I want to give some context as it pertains to that community where the proposed site is. There are 7,400 individuals receiving some form of government assistance, this being food stamps, SSI, public cash assistance. There's over 7,000 individuals that have no health insurance. That is a key indicator or inference of underemployment. There's almost one-third of residents that are below the poverty level. And there's also over 2,600 individuals unemployed. And I want to make note of this, that it's not that job opportunities are unavailable, but it's that many in this community are ill-equipped to be gainfully employed. And we can make reference to this of historic numbers of low unemployment rates, but this community where this proposed site is, there's still a number, a staggering number of individuals who are yet unemployed. There are 5,800 individuals over the age of 18 that do not have a high school diploma. So since 2016, our organization, One More Child Hope Street, has provided approximately 50 residents with an opportunity to receive their GED. We're trying to get these individuals gainfully employed. We've provided over 120 delinquent youth with critical life skills and character development, which is allowing these young people to be gainfully employed. We've served over 1,500 children and families with free groceries to mitigate their reliance on government assistance. We also serve as a jobs-for-life site, which is a 16-section employability skills program. I just wanted to, and I see that my two minutes are up. Thank you.
You have a half hour, a half minute.
Okay, I'm sorry. I make note of all of that to say that we're still serving as an economic engine for that community. There's a number of individuals who, again, don't have the skills to be gainfully employed. We want to serve as an employment center on that proposed site, and I believe many of our proposed programmings and services will promote that at the use of policy 8.9 and also policy 8.9.5. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Commission, Steve McAlley. I'm here representing the industrial users that surround this property, and they are, without exception, opposed to this use being introduced into the industrials.
Can you give your address, please?
2407 Sunset Drive, Tampa, Florida.
Okay, thank you.
Both the Planning Commission staff and the city staff have found it inconsistent and for a number of reasons. One is recognizing industrial lands that should be supported and retained to continue the assistance of conversion and improvement of industrial properties, preserve light and heavy industrial properties in the appropriate location. This is not about the use. This is about that use being in an industrial park. It doesn't belong there. The reason you have residential and industrial properties, and they're segregated, is to protect them from each other. They generate noise. They have odors. They have vibrations. You have heavy chemicals that are being blended and soap manufacturing that's occurring immediately adjacent to the site. The residential encroachment introduces a new use. This is not something that has been there existing before that was an adjacent use that you're trying to recognize. It is a brand-new use. If they wanted to introduce a warehouse space, they could do that under light industrial. What they can't do is introduce the residential component. It doesn't belong there. I spoke with a fire marshal today. They have serious concerns about introducing and placing this many children and families potentially in harm's way. They won't get to this review unless you approve this, and then they go through the permitting process. And then how do you manage containment? Do you want to be on the line and having voted to insist that up to 589 residents would be placed immediately adjacent to a heavy industrial site? You have all kinds of uses in there. They've already pointed out, electrical component uses. You have the stone cutting. You have solar panel manufacturing. You have chemical manufacturing. This is a disruption of a viable economic and industrial use that's been permitted and has been there at least for the last 40 years. This is a historic location. The cause that they're advocating is a noble cause. The location is not a noble location. It doesn't belong here. The former city council has no bearing on this. Whether they voted to approve it or not has nothing to do with whether or not it's appropriate. Now, the staff has pointed out to you, both the city staff and the Planning Commission staff have said it doesn't belong there and it's inconsistent. The residential on this is not appropriate. It's not an attack on the petitioner. This is simply an advocacy that this doesn't belong in this location. It doesn't have the right compatibility to be safe. And would you really want to put families and children into this location knowing that they have heavy industrial uses immediately surrounding it? I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a summary that I'd like to have received and put in the record.
Okay, if anyone else would like to come up, please come up.
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission. My name is Pastor Ken Witten, and my address is 9520 Eddings Road in Odessa, Florida. Thank you for letting us come to speak to you tonight. I found it kind of interesting that your mission statement at the Hillsborough City Planning Commission is real very similar to ours in the sense that your vision for your community is to improve economic development, quality of life, and to provide value-added services. That's exactly what you're hearing tonight and what we are all about. We think this is a beautiful place to build lives and build people. Five years ago, I met with the mayor. I said to the mayor, I said, "Mr. Mayor, if you could send an army of people somewhere in the city to help the city, to serve the city and to serve you as public servants, where would you put them?" Thinking that he might say West Tampa. I had my heart West Tampa. We had been involved with just elementary and helping that school from an F to bring it to a B, which we are involved with 13 title schools right now currently helping, and I thought that would be the answer. He said, "Pastor Ken, that is not where I would send you at all. You do not need to go west." In fact, we are changing, and he talked about a river walk, and he talked about economic development and the plans, and he said, "That would not be the clientele you want to serve." But he said, "I would like to send you to Sulphur Springs." And I said, "We'll do it." And so five years ago, that's exactly where we went. We took over a church that was running about 10 people, and they gave that church to us, and we put $1 million in that church building to read Theresit and the Papship, because that community is worthy of a building and a church in that area. We began doing what we call Adopt a Block, which means for these past five years, we've been walking that neighborhood every other Saturday, knocking on doors to ask two questions. How can we pray for you, and how can we make your life better? We began working out of the Bartholomew Center, of the gracious hospitality of our city, and where we've created a GED and where we have had what we call Evening Reporting Center. We've met with all the judges, and through their approval, we've been able to delinquents, and we've had about 100 men and young women that have gone through this program, young boys go through this program to help them. We've seen crime rate drop 46%. The thing I'd want you to hear is simply this. We came to serve. Everybody that comes before you has an agenda, and uses that agenda as some kind of profit. And I would say to you, we're not here to make any money. This pastor is paid by his church. I absolutely make $0 from what this is. I'm here to serve. I love Sulphur Springs. It's a great place to live. They do not need a handout. They just need a hand up. They need somebody to help them, and we think that we can help them, develop jobs, give them the skill sets, feed them, help them with education, and make a better life for them. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Stuart Connor, 1202 Oxbridge Drive, Lutes, Florida. I've served at Hope Street for the last five years. I'm currently the board chair of that organization, and instead of me talking tonight, I'll let a single mom talk to you guys.
I left a domestic violence relationship and made a lot of poor choices, tried to make money. He took everything, and so do whatever he can to try to survive. Of course, it ends up leading you in jail. When I first found out that I was pregnant, I was, you know, scared. I was a senior in high school and didn't know nothing about being a mom. After getting arrested and going to jail, when I got out, I was on house arrest and had nowhere to go with the kids. That's the scariest part, is thinking about not having them. I mean, I was in jail almost six months, and not having them was the worst thing ever.
Just was not easy, you know, to be a single mom. But the day that I had her was one of the most happiest moment of my life.
There's a fantastic amount of bravery that's lived out every day in the life of a single mom, and they're out there facing life, and many times on their own, at least with our brave moms, because they don't have the background of support. But we get to be the extended family to come in and undergird them. We get to be that safety net, to be able to help them, to be able to continue to be brave on behalf of their child and on behalf of their family.
When I first found out about, you know, this program, the Brave Moms, I was very excited and at the same time, you know, very nervous.
Everybody's supportive. If I need something, it's here, but I'm able to save money and financially get ahead, too.
Coming here was a big step, you know, like I've learned to be a wonderful mom to my daughter.
I get to work, and I get to be on my feet again, but I don't have to worry so much right now, too. I can get where I need to be.
My mentors, ever since I was four weeks pregnant, they've been here by my side, and I am getting a little bit stronger, stronger and to God word, and, you know, learning more about Him than what I used to know, because I didn't really know anything. I didn't used to go to church like that.
Now I can actually set goals. I mean, I have a goal to buy a house. I've almost got all my credit back to where it needs to be, you know. Little by little, it's coming together.
I didn't even know the word budgeting, what it means, you know, but they taught me all that. To tell you the truth, I think half of those stuff that they had taught me made me who I am today.
Now my kids have stability, and they feel secure. Kids thrive on that, you know. They're doing, Carter's doing excellent in school. They're wild, but they're doing really good. They've adjusted and everything.
Oh, you're getting murdered for this, I'm sorry.
It just seems secure to them, you know. They're not fearful. They're not hungry. They're not worried about anything. They're just being kids.
Now I'm just very grateful to be here, you know. It's been nothing but good, a blessing. It's just a safe haven, really, to be here, to have all the support, it's all the love, and just to make me feel that, you know, I have a chance in life for me and my daughter.
Okay, any other public comment?
Good evening. I'm Jerry Haig. I'm the CEO of One More Child at 1005 Sykes Boulevard in Lakeland, Florida. I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, and the Commission for giving an opportunity to speak. Man, we've got a rich history, 114 years of being able to have been recognized both for the quality of our work as well as the quantity of our work. I mean, you can see a powerful impact in the lives of the young women that you've seen on the video, who are brave moms, that are single moms out there that are raising their children, trying to, but they need extended family to come alongside them. I'm particularly excited about this opportunity we have in the Sulphur Springs Seminole Heights area. I wish you could walk around that neighborhood with me. I wish you could be able to see that abandoned property out there just waiting for someone to come alongside and to put it to use to literally transform a community that has been impoverished, that's been abandoned, that's been, in many ways, treated the same way that empty property has been. One of the things you can see is an exciting partnership that we're able to have with the community of Sulphur Springs, with Seminole Heights, with the City of Tampa. the community of Sulfur Springs, with Seminal Heights, with the City of Tampa, as well as with the State of Florida, as we leverage every dollar that the state gives us to be able to provide care, we're leveraging it with the impact of five times that amount of private dollars that are coming from all across the state and even outside the state of Florida. And we look at that key economic engine. When you're leveraging that many public dollars with that many private dollars, we are a driving economic force within that community. You've heard about the economic force we're able to provide through our GED programs, through diversion programs, through young men and young women that need the opportunity of someone to come alongside them, to help them, to be able to transform their individual lives so that the state of Florida, so that the city of Tampa, so that our communities are not paying for the impact of leaving them abandoned over that period of time. We're able to come alongside with job creation. We're able to come alongside with career counseling. And so we can see that range of employment for families within those communities. In addition to that, and you've heard just a bit of it and you have it in your information, of the child hunger programs, we're able to make sure children within those surrounding communities, you've seen those neighborhoods budding up right next to this property and oh how I do hope that this property is a safe property. If it's not, you have families that are already in jeopardy within those communities. And I know the City of Tampa has safe properties. We're able to provide for children through foster care, through child anti-sex trafficking within these communities, through family care within the neighborhoods, and then through our Single Moms Program, through that compassion center, through the Single Moms Housing, through a community transformation center, which I'm extremely excited about because rarely, rarely do we have the opportunity in a lifetime to be able to transform a community. And that's what we're going to be able to do together. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Leon Battle, 1015 Sykes Boulevard, Lakeland, Florida, 33810. I'm the executive director of child hunger and engagement at One More Child. Prior to that, I worked at the Department of Children and Families, working with families in need, as well as working with anti-trafficking victims in the central region after Governor Scott passed the Safe Harbor Act. Before that, I was a child that grew up in a home that was broken. Both of my parents were substance abusers and didn't seem like there was any hope. It wasn't until an organization came into our lives and brought us the support that we needed. Today, I have the pleasure of working for an amazing organization. I'm working on my doctorate. My father works at a rehabilitation facility and my mom works with families who were just like us at one time. It was because of those services, we were able to get where we are now, to provide a push of the economy as an individual family. That's what One More Child does. We work with these families and we wrap around them. It's not just about passing out food. I'm so proud of the amount of meals that we provided this last year. But the most important thing has been the life change we've seen in families. We're bringing in experts from the community to work with these families, to see them get the jobs that they need, to see them start their first budget. We have partnerships with some phenomenal distributors like Publix and Farm Share and Walmart. Many of these companies also offer the clients that come to us jobs after they complete our program. So we're excited to bring this to this area. I actually lived in the Sulfur Springs area for a while. I know the families there, I know what's going on in that area, and I know they desperately need support and love and assistance to get them where they are. I understand that job opportunities are a big deal for this area and I really do believe with the proper training and us equipping these families, we're going to see a generational change. So not just an individual change, but we'll see in Tampa generations change, which will bring in support to the city and then bring new light and hope to the city. So our prayer is that this will happen and we'll be able to be in this area and we'll be able to bring these life-giving services to children and families in need. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Rich Reedy. I am a resident of Hillsborough County, 16303 East Course Drive. I'm also a member of the advisory board for One More Child and have been since their inception five years ago. And tonight I address you in support of the applicant's petition to change the zoning from ZI to CC 35. Along with staff's report though, I'd ask that you take into consideration a famous quote attributed to Voltaire, and that is, "Don't let great get in the way of good." One More Child envisions many services and functions for the Rolex Drive property, including short-term crisis housing, essential services and counseling, food distribution, financial literacy instruction, DJJ diversion programs, GED, job readiness and skills trainings. The Hope Street campus's primary function will be not in the production of widgets, but on the development and sustainability of human capital across the Sulfur Springs community. The comp plan's intention to reserve land for light industrial use is a great idea. However, the reality is, is this site remains undeveloped and grossly underutilized, while at the same time, the surrounding communities confront the unrelenting daily challenge of survival. Additionally, the uses identified in staff's report for the current LI classification include light manufacturing, heavy repair, various forms of processing, and research. At a minimum, these uses will require varying levels of skilled workers, something noticeably absent within the community of Sulfur Springs and the surrounding area. Therefore, the select few that gain employment will need to be well-trained and likely meaning that they will have to travel into the community and not be from the community itself. The current proposal by One More Child will not be measured in terms of production units, data, or revenue. It will be in terms of human capital and a magnitude to that of any solo commercial utilization or venture. So again, I submit to you, don't let a great land use plan get in the way of a very good investment in the area's residents. Respectfully, I ask that you give this your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. The applicant would like to respond?
I'll keep this short and I'll begin by saying you can see why I'm honored to be with these people today and that they chose me to help them and assist them. It's just an outstanding organization and I'm thrilled to be here. You didn't hear in the staff reports, all the housing policies that I presented to you. That wasn't in the city's report. With all due respect to the staffs, they had tunnel vision. There's more than just a few categories or some categories about industrial. There's a whole chapter of housing and there's a bunch of policies, only some that I presented to you, that 100% support this request. You did hear, and you saw on a map, the CC 35 is in the immediate area, substantially in the area. This is not a spot zoning. It is critical that the CMU 35 was supported by the Tampa City Council in 2016, not by four members or five members, but unanimously. And it is critical that the DEO found no adverse impacts. That's not an idea, and with due respect to my colleague and friend, Mr. McElini, that's not an idea or a signal. That's a precedent. That's more than a message. I would say with the deepest respect, that's a strong message to you all and we hope that you consider that in your review of this. There is a residential community there now. They're already existing. So to allow heavy industrial use right up against those folks are exactly the things that, again, my friend, Mr. McElini, brought up to you are danger. We don't want that. And approving this will keep those residents in a much better position. It's easy to cherry pick through a lot of policies. It's what some of us do. We open up the book and we cherry pick through. But I think we made a very good case in regard to the policies that we hope that you'll consider. We appreciate all your consideration. We appreciate your time and your patience. And again, we're very happy to be here and hope to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Joseph?
I'd like to hear from LaShawn on the city's take before. Love a question.
Good evening, Commissioners. LaShawn Doc, City of Tampa Planning and Development. The City of Tampa reviewed the request and we had objections to the request, given the light industrial land use category that exists on the property today. And those comments were provided within your packet.
I saw those comments, but you guys, the city has done things similar to this for reasons similar to this before. So what, besides, are these just the only grounds? It's just these?
Well, we looked at what's surrounding the property. So you have, this is the map. The map of the property, which is on the Elmo, which is coming up for you shortly, has the property surrounded to the north. All of the gray that you see there is industrial general zoning. So we look at the existing land uses that exist to the north, to the west, and to the east. And also to the south, there's a small parcel, there are two parcels south of this parcel, and they're all industrial.
Okay. So it's strictly about adjacency for the city, that's the bottom line. It's just because there's industrial adjacent, this has to stay industrial to meet with what's at its borders.
Well, we look at what's requested and what's allowed in that requested land use category. So what's allowed with the requested CC 35 is that residential component. And given that it is surrounded with the industrial zoning and land use categories, we felt that would be inconsistent with the surroundings.
So this is an area where the city wants to see future change, for instance, going away from industrial to something different? This is an area of the city that the city wants to maintain as strictly industrial?
Well, given the size of the property, the acreage that's on the parcel, and that it has that industrial zoning and the industrial land use that exists on it, and that area surrounding it is that industrial, that is how we came up with our finding.
Was there any discussion between the applicant and the city about possible other areas or alternatives? I know Sulfur Springs is an area that the city has been looking at redevelopment in a lot of other different ways. So it seems kind of strange to me that the city's so closed door about this. There doesn't seem to be a discussion, a rapport, I guess, between the two parties about what should happen, where it should happen, how it should happen. So was there any of that or?
I did meet with the applicant's part of the applicants with the group, but I can't say who it was exactly. There are a couple that are here from the organization that I did not meet with. But they told us about this parcel of land that they were looking at. And we told them at that time, you know, we explained the zoning, of course, and what's allowable on the property. And that's when we discussed the fact that they would have to go through a rezoning also in addition to the comprehensive plan amendment in order to have that residential component.
Okay.
But we did not discuss another parcel.
Okay. So that's where you guys left it, both parties are kind of sticking to their guns, if you will?
Well, we did not. Also, on the city's end, we would not, I guess, recommend an area unless we were asked. We met with the intent in looking at this parcel specifically.
Okay.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. LaShawn, while you're there, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Since this whole area has had this industrial land use designation for a while, do we know if this is a, or any, one of the parcels nearby, is it Brownfield Site?
That I don't know. I can't say if it is a Brownfield Site. Do you have a?
Yeah.
Your staff, may I? Hold on a second.
That's something, hi, Commissioner Green, Jennifer from one with the Planning Commission. That's something the city has a process for designating later down the line, but we don't know that at this time. But there's a process for that, to examine that and to do a public notice on if it's a Brownfield Site.
Let me.
And to designate it as such.
Let me ask it in a slightly different way then. Does it appear that this could possibly be a Brownfield Site?
I can't answer that. I don't have any evidence to go either way on that.
Do we know the history of any development on this property?
To my knowledge, my professional opinion today, I understand that it has been vacant for quite some time.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Walz?
My question is, along the same line, I've been close to that neighborhood about 40-something years. I don't remember anything being on that property. Not anything. Commissioner Crest asked a question at our last meeting and she said, "That's her neighborhood." She was hoping that they would somehow build a train depot or something so she can catch a train because the train tracks are right across the street. And she and I talked afterwards and that sounds like a good idea, but that's not going to happen. But immediately behind that property, all back there, those are homes. Family homes of kids that I taught in Temple Terrace because that was their landmark. So I don't know what the real issue is. I don't understand everything that there is to know, but I do understand kids. And I want to put this on the record. I was at a, my sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Gamma Theta Omega Chapter, was at that site where Mr. Bab has a group of kids and the kids and their families were all celebrating. We took out some things, but what we took was not nearly what they took. But all I'm saying is that we're talking about people and property. And people are not property. And I'm just saying that I'm not quite sure as to why we can't put something there. I mean, like I said, I've traveled that route as a short way to get to University Mall. And there's been nothing there for, it will almost be 45 years, nothing.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes. Do you have, one thing was a question that I wanted to find out. Is this property in an opportunity zone?
I don't believe it is. I don't believe so. And I, LaShawn, do you? We don't have the map with us right now, but we don't believe so.
Okay. And then I had questions for the applicant, but do I need to wait for that or? Oh, okay. Okay. In your slideshow presentation, one of the things that I saw in the Phase 1 was the impact. And was that a local impact or was that like in terms of like food being given out, diapers and things like that? Was that all into the local community or was that being distributed, you know, outside of the state?
What was presented on the five-year plan, that was for the Tampa location just before you today.
Okay. And I wanted to know at this location, how many people, if there was an idea on how many people were going to be employed there? And even though that the zoning would potentially allow for 540-something people to live there, what's the real intent or, you know, the idea on how many people you were thinking of, you know, having house? Just, you know, I just think that would be beneficial for the fellows here to understand.
I can answer part of that question. So the total project, I mean, we look at the total project development as something in the range of about $14 million. And so, I mean, one, consider that economic impact that's going to be invested into that community. I appreciate Vice Chair Walz talking about the needs of children's walking through there and being able to see green space and being able to have places where kids can play in a really blighted area that has been abandoned. But in that impact, once those, all three of the projects are completed, I couldn't give you an exact amount of employment. We know it'd be, gosh, easily in the double digits. I couldn't tell you exactly how many. As well as then being able to see 12 different units for single moms and their children. So we'd be able to impact, you know, 100-plus single moms and children over that five-year timeframe as well. And really, when we look at that housing, that's the transformational component for those single moms and their kids. So it's a 12-month program. Education, job skills, career counseling, financial skills, mentorship, and then help that single mom transition out towards self-sufficiency. So we'll see those moms transition right within that community to be able to continue making that impact out there now. Yeah.
Let me answer a question, sir.
Yes, yes. I was, just wanted to assume, I assumed that this was not going to be, you know, some sort of high, you know, big multifamily type of, you know, like housing. It was more on a smaller scale.
No, sir. And again, as I emphasize, which I think... No, sir. And again, as I emphasize, which I think the perception's a little bit off, which is difficult in these things, but the major component is the food processing, warehousing, trucking. That's the major use on this property. The residential component is a much smaller use.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Marina?
Commissioner, if I may?
Yes, please.
Hi, Cody. Commissioner Powell, I'm just following up on the question that you had just asked. We looked up, we weren't able to find out if it was an opportunity zone, but we did look up the enterprise zones, which are state-designated geographical areas targeted for economic revitalization. Tax incentives are offered to businesses and people in the zone to encourage economic growth and investment, and this is just outside of the enterprise zone, from what I can find on this map. And I still don't know about the opportunity zones, but I was hoping I had that answer on the enterprise zones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner?
Thank you. I guess I have two questions. I guess the first question is for Ms. Malone. There's, in front of us, we have a letter from the state of Florida. We have a letter from Hillsborough County Schools. If this property was owned by either the state or the school board, and they decided to put this type of use on the property, would they still have to come before the planning commission, or they just go before rezoning?
Yes, they would. And I can always, I can defer to Melissa Zornita because she's nodding her head. But they'd probably need a public use, would be my professional opinion on the dais. Yeah, it would need to go to public.
Okay.
So it would still go through that same process. So that would be, that would be different.
Okay. And then my second question, I think this is for Ms. Doc. The, this property's not in, it's not in Sulfur Springs, by the boundaries of Sulfur Springs. It's in Sentinel Heights. Sentinel Heights has a vision plan, but it doesn't seem to include this piece. So is there anything in the Sentinel Heights plan that would consider this type of use, or at least the transition of industrial to this type of use?
Yes. This site, I believe, is just east of that boundary. So it is not within that. Within that plan, you're speaking of the form-based code that was done with Sentinel Heights recently.
So you couldn't, because it's outside of that boundary, you couldn't, you couldn't use that as a model to guide, to guide you when it comes to this piece of property? Is that, is that correct?
Correct, because that is the form-based code that's in place. So that is the code for within that defined boundary.
Okay.
That's been established.
Okay. And then, sorry, just one more question. And this is for the applicant. You mentioned your work at the Bartholomew Center. That's about two miles from here, from this property. There is bus service on Rowlett Park Drive, but is there any intention to provide some sort of transportation between those two facilities? It seems like this is more of a residential component. Bartholomew is more, you know, day-to-day services. Is there any plan or consideration to make sure that if people need to get between the two facilities, that there's a safe way to do it? Because from what I could tell, they would have to cross the Hillsborough River at Rowlett, which is a bridge. But that's the only way to get there, is that one route. So is there a shuttle service or some sort of plan to make sure that commute is not a strain?
Well, sir, I just want to say again that the major component here is not residential. And someone's hit my shoulder who has the answer.
And I just want to make mention that there will be two distinct uses for both properties. The current use for the George Bartholomew Center is an educational hub for youth. So currently, we provide our diversion services with the Department of Juvenile Justice. We also provide GD there. So our continued plan is to utilize that as an educational hub, specifically with the Sulfur Springs K-8 Community School being adjacent to the George Bartholomew Center. And then the proposed use for the land on Rowlett Park Drive will again be for our single moms, and also our job literacy, our employability skills for adult residents, and while we keep our George Bartholomew use as a youth component for our programming and services.
Transportation.
Well, that will negate our need for transporting from both sites.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, sir?
I guess, my concern would be is that you're going to have, if there's, if this is under the same umbrella, that there's, at some point, there's going to be some overlap. And so just, in looking at that neighborhood, in my own experience of that neighborhood, that isn't the safest place to walk. So as, that was my own concern, just for a potential client.
They do-
But you answered my question.
They do have buses to provide transportation, but the uses here, the site, as answered to you, will negate the need to go to, between the two areas. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
(Laughter)
Thank you.
Commissioner Willman?
I would.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't see you.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I would move that we support a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan based on the following policies. Housing policy 1.2.3, which is to ensure that a full range of housing, from temporary shelters to transitional and permanent housing for renters, and ownership opportunities are available with appropriate supportive services for those who need them. Housing policy 1.3, which is-
It's on page seven.
Ensure that an adequate supply of housing is available to meet the needs, preferences, and financial capabilities of Tampa's households now and in the future in all neighborhoods. Land use policy 1.2.8, which is to promote a range of uses and close proximity to each other, goes on. Land use policy 2.1.2, use limited land resources more efficiently and pursue a development pattern that is more economically sound by encouraging infill development on vacant and underutilized land. Land use policy 6.1.1, which is to accommodate planned levels of household employment growth, growth, et cetera. Land use policy 8.9.2, which is to encourage the continued intensification and existence of industrial warehousing, distribution facilities, dot, dot, dot. And because the CC 35 would still allow for industrial uses, I thought it was important to point that out because it would not, it would not indicate a loss of industrial per se. It would just allow that extra residential use, which is a policy in our comp plan to provide a range of residential uses in the, in the city.
Okay. Commissioner Willman made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Walz. Any discussion before we vote? Oh, Commissioner Dix?
You know, it merits-
It merits recognition that our sole purpose up here is simply to find whether a request is consistent or inconsistent, rather than, you know, trying to get into the weeds of what may be built and how many units and whatnot. So I kind of want to simplify it. And I like what our new commissioner has suggested in her motion, enlisting the policies that she finds it consistent with. And I think that, that certainly is meritorious in that. I would even add to it, there's others. For example, there's land use policy 8.9.5, and I'm not trying to change your motion, but I specifically mentioned this one because it says to continue to assist the conversion of existing industrial to flex space and business incubators that provide new jobs and comparable employment opportunities without the environmental impacts of traditional industrial uses. And that's in the comp plan. And, you know, if you look at what is being proposed, what more could you ask for? I mean, that's exactly what they're seeking to do. Provide new jobs, provide something innovative. And we should be proud of that and embrace that. And, you know, we have an opportunity to find it consistent. We're inconsistent, and I so, wholeheartedly concur with our new commissioner and say that, yeah, let's find this thing consistent and move on.
Just give a second.
Yes. Any other questions, suggestions, discussion before we vote? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Willman, a second by Commissioner Walz to find Tampa's comprehensive plan amendment eighteen dash eleven consistent with the City of Tampa Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Please raise your hands. Commissioner Dix, Commissioner Marino, Commissioner Willman, Commissioner Green, Commissioner Thrower, Commissioner Walz, and Commissioner Powell are in favor. Seven in favor. Those opposed, please raise your hands. Commissioner Doughty and Commissioner Joseph opposed. Motion passes as consistent, seven to two. Thank you. (Applause) Yes.
Just one thing. Mr. Connor, pick these up. These cost a lot of money, so don't, don't leave them behind. We got all the info out of here that we need.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, Derek.
Okay. We are going to move on to item number four, Tampa Comprehensive Plan eighteen dash thirteen, Future Land Use Map Amendment.
Good evening. Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff. We're traveling to the South Tampa Planning District within the Palmasia neighborhood for Plan Amendment eighteen thirteen. This is a privately initiated, small-scale amendment because it's less than ten acres. It's about zero-point-one-nine acres. The request before you was to go from residential ten to residential twenty. This also had a previous amendment request, seventeen oh-four, but it never made it to your public hearing. It was just briefed sometime last year. So there's no previous precedent for the request before you. I have it outlined on the aerial in red. It's located at the intersection of West Bay to Bay Boulevard, which is a pretty major east-west corridor throughout the city. It is classified as an arterial. We also have South Heims, which is a collector. So this is at the corner of an arterial and a collector. This is the subject site. I have single-family homes to the south. This is some medical office uses. And then we have a church used in the north. We're going to have some pictures. This is the subject site. We're facing south on Heims Avenue. The subject site is right here. This is like the side lot of the subject site. This is the intersection of South Heims Avenue and West Bay to Bay Boulevard. So you see those medical uses, and then the church use across the street, across Bay to Bay Boulevard. This is east of the subject site. When I took this picture, the subject site was right behind me. So this is what that side lot interfaces, interfaces these medical office uses. The, you'll see it on the future land use map. This use is actually Community Mixed Use thirty-five, future land use that the subject site interfaces with. And then we have South Heims Avenue. My last picture, this is West Bay to Bay Boulevard. This is north of the subject site, right across the street. This is the adopted future land use map. It is residential ten. We also have that Community Mixed Use thirty-five right across the street that I mentioned earlier. I have residential twenty, which is the darker brown, residential six, which is the yellow, and then a little sliver of the suburban mixed use six, which I put it on my legend this time. Kind of uncommon to see that in South Tampa, but it is present. And the proposal before you would change this parcel to residential twenty. This would increase the existing, the applicant could only have one unit on the subject site, it would increase it to three. It would ultimately increase the floor area ratio from about two thousand square feet and four thousand square feet. It would allow for that higher residential density and greater commercial intensity. It would ultimately change the locational criteria that the subject site would be, would have to apply. By the locational criteria, in the residential ten is more strict than in the residential twenty. They have a little bit more leeway, and they have a little more leeway to do what they would like to do with the subject site. But we did find it consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does promote that residential infill proximate to employment and transit service, which is where this is located. We also found that, given the location at the corner of a collector and an arterial, it was pretty underutilized, just having that residential ten future land use, especially since it has that community mixed use thirty-five across the street. Our comprehensive plan also calls to provide for a sustainable and convenient mix of uses for the neighborhood, and this would allow this, that to happen for the neighborhood. We did find that it was within the same character as the surrounding area and compatible with that development pattern, and that this would provide a sensitive transition to the single-family neighborhoods to the south. As I've stated before, given the surrounding development pattern with that community mixed use thirty-five directly to the east, it would not be out of scale to increase this to that residential twenty, and we found that it would provide that transition to the south. And this is right at that intersection, at the corner of an arterial and a collector. With that, we're recommending consistency. The City of Tampa is not here anymore. LaShawn had to step out, but they did find it consistent as well, and that's in your packet. Available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Andrea Zelman with the law firm of Buchanan, Ingersoll Rooney, four oh one East Jackson Street. And tonight, I'm representing Florida Ticket Firm. I have with me my client, Josh Burnett, and I told him after Todd Pressman introduced his client that I wasn't going to say he's the greatest person in the entire world that I've ever represented, but he is a good person and has been a pleasure to work with and is a good attorney as well. So, again, the purpose of the application tonight is simply to change this from R ten to R twenty in order to allow Josh to convert a small, single-family home, I think it's approximately thirteen hundred square feet, to a small law office. And I can't remember now whether Jennifer mentioned it, but we have filed a PD rezoning amendment to run concurrent with this application. And the intent is, and it's, this is in the PD site plan, to preserve the existing home and simply convert it to a law office. So there will not be new construction, just simply an upgrade to the exterior of the building. And as Jennifer noted, this is consistent with kind of the trend, pattern of redevelopment along this portion of Bay to Bay. We believe that changing this to this use and to this category would provide for a nice transition between the CMU thirty-five to our east, and then the R ten to the west, and also to the south of the property. The use that would be approved by the PD rezoning, a professional office, would be of minimal impact to the surrounding or to the nearby residential neighborhood. And as noted, both your staff and the city staff found this consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we respectfully ask that you do the same. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Okay, no public comment. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, no questions. Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Marina?
I move that we find the proposed land change, land use change for City of Tampa, TA CPA eighteen dash thirteen, from residential ten to residential twenty, consistent with the Imagine Twenty Forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to Tampa City Council.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Marina. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Powell. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is item number five, Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment eighteen dash fourteen.
Good evening, Commissioners Jake Collins, planning commission staff. The last two amendments for the City of Tampa tonight are the amendments associated with the high schools. So these are pretty much carbon copies of each other. So as we run through this, what's good for one is good for the other. So where are we? We are in the Central Tampa Planning District, East Tampa Urban Village, the East Tampa Civic Business Association. This is Middleton High School. So this gives you an aerial to look at it. You can see the very tight blocks, the tight development pattern of East Tampa. Specifically, when you look to the east, the south, and the west, that block pattern looks like it's representing residential uses. Where actually, in the east, it's representing some commercial and industrial uses in the Transitional Use twenty-four. When we go up to the north there, you can see some commercial activity. That commercial activity is actually the warehousing and packaging primarily of fruits and vegetables. This is the, I guess, the historic center, if you will, of that area for the City of Tampa for the wholesale production, or wholesale distribution of fruits and vegetables. To the very south, on the outline in red, is Osborne running east and west. On the western side of it is North Twenty-Second Street. And then to the north is Hillsborough Avenue. On the east side is actually a CSX right-of-way, railroad line running right there. So again, this is publicly initiated. You'll see in a minute, there are a variety of land uses there, rather than the public, semi-public. And this is- And this is also out of conversations with the City of Tampa as we do land use studies throughout the City of Tampa in respects to Transitional Use 24. There's Transitional Use 24 associated with this school, and there's also Transitional Use 24 associated with Robinson High School. So the first thing that we're doing in this land use study with that Transitional Use 24 is to look at publicly owned or publicly operated uses throughout the city and having conversations about those with that land use. So again, this is regular scale. It's just under 50 acres, so it will go to the state for review. And you can see the various land uses that are associated with it. So here we have just a look at the school. This is in the great lawn, basically, of Middleton there at the corner of 22nd Street and Osborne. The school is stuck back there in the back through all of the trees that you see out front. Give you a little context of what it might be like if you were a student to walk to school down 22nd Street. You can see signalized crosswalk that is right there, and you can also see the sidewalks on both sides. And you can look at it and see that this is primarily, there is some commercial activity that exists on 22nd Street, but immediate to the school, it's not very intense. You do have some uses that are around there. The intensity occurs once you actually get up to Hillsborough Avenue. The other side, I'm sure there's some students that are going down the railroad tracks. I probably would have enjoyed walking down the railroad tracks. Maybe some of you guys would have walked down those railroad tracks when you were in high school. Let's not say that we did the smartest things when we were in high school, Commissioner Willman. These are where I'm going with that, right? So you'll also notice when we, right here to the, to the east right here, what you do have, though, is a lot of industrial uses. And those industrial uses, you can see here. That Transitional Use 24, that purple that you have there, that's what we have a conversation about, the public use of some of that property. You can see, again, the Residential 10. You can see Residential 35s, Residential 50s, and the community commercial 35 all throughout there. You'll also see further to the south, the Residential 10, kind of that orange color, if you will. And that shows you the single-family detached that is surrounding Middleton High School, certainly to the west, certainly to the south, and to the east, once you get by some of that Transitional Use 24. And then we talked about the warehouse and distribution that is located further to the north. You'll also notice here, in the very southeastern corner of this, that blue right there, that's low max middle, low max middle magnet, tongue twister. And you'll notice that it actually is blue, the public semi-public. That's what we're working with here, as you can see here with that public semi-public. So again, intensities and densities. Yeah, there's almost 50 acres, so obviously you see all of that, the dwelling and the square footage that the land use categories have today. It's not really applicable because, again, public semi-public is for the public good. There is not a defined FAR, there is not a defined density for public semi-public. Instead, what you're looking for is compatibility in the use of whether it is a public good. So again, government-owned facilities, whether it's a water treatment facility or this building that we're standing in today, if there were actually going to be government offices there in this site. Churches, hospitals, schools, attractions, there's a variety of different uses in the public semi-public that first must demonstrate that they offer the public good, the public use. And then, secondly, you're looking at the idea of compatibility, that bulk, that scale, that massing. Most certainly, you look into account of the zonings that may be around it, and you also look into account of the FARs and the densities of the land uses that are around it. So the consistency review here, the public school facility section is pretty much a carbon copy between all four of the jurisdictions. So one of the things that you'll see in all four of the jurisdictions is how the school district will work with that jurisdiction to locate schools within the jurisdiction, to find adequate places for those, and also to make sure that they fit within the character of the neighborhood. That goes one step further into the land use section of the Tampa's Comprehensive Plan to talk about compatibility. Again, whether that compatibility is through the bulk, the scale, and the massing, or that compatibility is the like use of a public use. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. I thank you, and this concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? No public, oh, public comment? No public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Would somebody like to make a motion? Commissioner Powell?
I make a motion that we find the proposed map amendment consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Commissioner Powell's made a motion to find Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-14 consistent with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Do we have a second? Commissioner Dix is second. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The last item we have is Tampa Comprehensive Amendment 18-15.
Thank you, Chair, again, Jake Collins for the record. This is TA CPA 1850. This is Robinson High School, much in the same respect as what we just did. This is the South Tampa Planning District. This is Gandy Sun Bay South. We're located basically about half mile or so from the Air Force Base. Here we have the aerial looking down. On the west, you have Manhattan. On the east, you have Lois. To the south of where that's outlined is Rembrandt Drive. To the north is the actual school. So this is property that the school district has and is actually doing some uses there. It used to be an apartment complex that actually had a land use trade or a land use swap, if you will, with those multifamilies that you see further to the south. Continuing also to the north, you'll go into, I believe it's Bobby Hicks Pool that's up there, and a variety of other park uses that are there. And you can also see that same type of development pattern with the single-family detached we have here, again to the west, again to the east, and there's another railroad line. It's a theme tonight with the railroads. It's publicly initiated. It's small scale. It's approximately 8.55 acres, Residential 20. And again, that Transitional Use 24 that we spoke about earlier, going to public semi-public. So here is the site as it exists today. This is taken from Lois and Rembrandt. This is, as you see as well, it looks like a parking lot, but you see the cones that are out there. One of the things that the school district is doing is they're actually doing driver ed courses out here on this, this lot that they have here. One of the things that's interesting about that is that's pretty new. If you go down to a Google Street View right now, and it's the summer, I think it's June of this year, that's not there. So this is something that they just put in there. And from our understanding, staff's understanding, the only thing that they do have plans for this property is that which you see, and then possibly on the other side here to actually do some athletic fields. They don't have the athletic fields, obviously, in there yet. One other thing, again, we looked at it with Middleton. Let's look at it with Robinson, just a look at how some of the students interact with the neighborhoods that are around there. That sidewalk that is on the side where the school is, that's actually a new sidewalk, again, that was built here June or later of this year, since, if you, again, look at the street view, you don't see that sidewalk. So it's always good to see that the schools are buying property and then immediately doing upgrades to that property to make sure that the students are safe going from point A to point B. And here you have the land use, again, showing the Residential 20. It's kind of tough to see, but the lower left-hand corner of the site is actually where the Transitional Use 24 is. It doesn't extend all the way out there. There's another privately owned piece of property. That's why there's that little notch out right there. You'll also see the Residential 10s across the street on either side of the school, the park to the north, and further to the south, you'll see some Transitional Use 24. Again, we may be back at some time to talk about those Transitional Use 24s since they are owned by the City of Tampa. The housing that is there is in cooperation through public entities, and there is also a large piece that the state owns that is for the South Tampa Trail. Here, if it were to be adopted, just simply showing the public semi-public land use. Same thing as before, 173 dwelling is, well, basically where you're going to is the semi-public is saying that it's not applicable. We talked about that in the last one. Again, government-owned facilities, churches, hospitals, schools, attractions, and transportation facilities. And that not applicability, again, goes into the issue that the FARs and the densities are not defined for the public semi-public. So again, with the consistency, as we did before, the public school facility section talks about all of the different jurisdictions and how there will be land uses available. Again, a school is a possibility in any future land use designation that you have in the city or in the county. And again, the compatibility issues of it, talking about bulk, scale, massing, to make sure that those uses are compatible to the surrounding neighborhoods. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? Please state your name and address.
My name is Lorraine Lundey. My address is 4114 West Vaughan Avenue, Tampa 33616. I just lived southwest of the school, and my main concern was, and I've spoken, I can't remember his name, but I've spoken with him, the main concern is before they tried to vacate Rembrandt Drive, which they found out was not going to be good as far as would be for the public. And that's my main concern with them doing the development in that lot, is that they do not close Rembrandt Drive. That's my main thing there. And then I noticed there was a letter in here because before, there was an issue as to why hotline was not consulted because Rembrandt Drive is used to go to the bus route. And I see there is a letter in here. This time, they did consult Rembrandt Drive, and it has in here. It says, "Recommended capital investment for enhanced transit connection." It says, "The following need is identified to facilitate connections to public transportation. Internal and external sidewalk ADA connections to transit on Lois Avenue." And as I'm trying to just figure out, I guess my question is, are they going to try to reroute the bus from where it runs on Manhattan Avenue to Lois Avenue? And I just wanted further explanation on this because I'm trying to figure out why would they need transportation for, to get to a bus route when there's already sidewalks already around the school?
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Any questions from commissioners? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we find the proposed map found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward on to Tampa City Council.
Okay. Commissioner Marino's made a motion. Would someone like to second it? Commissioner Dix is second. Any further discussion before we vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that is our last item. This meeting is adjourned.
Right?
Yes.
Yes.
To get an idea of a visual here of the site itself, as you'll see, it's located here on the river, Alafia River, between US Highway 31. And you'll see, specific to the site, and I have a wet zone survey that we're going to be showing here shortly, that to the southeast of your screen, in relation to the site that's in the center, is the community use that's within the 500 feet, which is the First Baptist of Riverview. Again, as we get into the next slide here, and I'll show you the wet zone as to where the actual-